I agree. Videos on. Okay. Uh, following the order. So tonight we've definitely not a formally in the horrible workshop setting and our purpose was to talk about possible land use ordinance revisions and to figure out uh who's going to do what in terms of drafting and reviewing and I think we need to set the course on a few issues on the list. And you know, my expectation is that we're not going to address everything on this list tonight. We certainly want them to solve all the all the issues, but there are several things that we should probably have some discussion about. There are some things that um as we can talk before, if we can give the after work a little bit, we have people have around some of these revisions, do some of the reviews that are called for, and then we can set a standard, the comprehensive group to review drafts and talk about those, those we need some recommendations. Um, so yeah, I thought we could quickly take a look at that list. Um, I didn't hear any questions about it. I think it's pretty straightforward. Um, so we can take a quick look at that and then consider those issues that requires a further discussion. We need to set a course on a few things. For instance, I think the the first bullet, we run with the land issue. It probably would be helpful for us to talk about that for a few minutes. Several of us have been for various reasons involved with that issue. And thoughts about it, but just so that everyone's on the same page with that. Um, I think it's a, you know, it's a matter of clarity and the only one to a great extent and um saying how specifically some of the issues that play that currently aren't very well expressed in the ordinance, I think. So that's one example, and there are several, several others. And then there's the category of you know, things that just need to be done to clean up the ordinance. Um, and by way of example, in that first set of bullets, there is a reference to a review by Coppers, Cobish, Cobicy Watership District that is inappropriate in the context that we found it in the ordinance. I think it related to um, Cobicy does not extend its services to Torsey and
Lovejoy.
Till love, was it Lovejoy? Lovejoy, that's right. That's right. They do reinforce it. And it, uh, it's a requirement in the ordinance that requires Cobicy's review for everything. So that's just a, you know.
Not just a review, but their approval as well.
Right.
What covered about that?
Yeah, and um. Yeah, I think that's a legitimate question.
I think it's located in the subdivision section two of the sooner than you should.
Yeah. Um, so there are those, those types of things. Um. The second bullet, the other ordinances related to land use. These are things that have other ordinances within the planning board's purview that mostly because of the fact that they've been in place for a while and may not have been reviewed and updated for quite some time. They need a review and recommendations about whether or not they need to be revised in any way. And that has more to do with the passage of time than anything. And that is part of the select boards effort to on a regular basis make sure all the ordinances in town, not just those that are administered by the planning board, but all the other ordinances are reviewed periodically and updated as appropriate. So that's that separate category. And then finally, there's the comprehensive plans. And what I had done with this is to go through the cost plan and identify by my number and my code, those that have been assigned in some way to the planning board. These are particular um strategies that have been assigned to the planning board uh and in some cases to the planning board and other entities for implementation. And those that are identified here are just those that the cost plan calls for implementation in short term, meaning within two years. And so I identified those. I've kind of looked through them and I, you know, I think that many of them are very big and broad, and I think they're going to, they're probably are a little more focused and more time that we're going to be able to give to them during this all, um, but we can go through them and just, just talk about them generally. There might be one or two that, um, that we could include, but we can, we can talk about that a little bit maybe to tell.
Well, is that, there's like a list behind me, you know, that's really spreadsheet, those are the bended to the comprehensive plan and there's a tab for every single board that's supposed to focus on. So there's one for code enforcement conservation planning board.
Oh, I, uh, yeah, I'm not sure I know the documents specifically you're talking about, but there is a, there is an implementation doubt in anything. There are a lot of them that were signed.
Yeah, it's like a hundred, probably a hundred and forty.
Yeah.
Okay, so I don't know if that's what we were referring to.
Oh, I, what I'm talking about right now is the, the list that I sent around.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the last category is comprehensive plan and I identified I don't know how many, but maybe fifteen or so.
There, there was, there's an Excel spreadsheet that delegated to the planning board. There's, there are your files with the, so there might be some of that too, you know, it's the list that was given, it was by the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, this is, I mean, this is the same thing.
Okay.
There's no difference, um, no difference in those two. I think that's just probably the complete list and these are short term. There are items in the cost plan that are ongoing for instance, it says keep doing X. So there are some ongoing things. There are short term, mid-term, long term.
Right.
Yeah.
Does the idea, um, behind the comprehensive plan stuff is that we would need to amend the land use ordinance to implement these things?
Well, uh, that's a possibility. Uh, it doesn't, it doesn't direct any ordinance changes. Um, when the cost plan calls for, in large part, is, is broader than that. There are a lot of instances where it says, you know, look at this issue and figure out if something else to do. Uh, but it doesn't specifically in most cases anyway, it doesn't, it doesn't, the rest is just a. If anybody can tell you one more, you mean one?
Sure.
Yeah. So as I said, I don't, you know, I don't think that we're going to address this entire list this time around because our goal is to get a package ready to submit to the select board and to meet the schedule that's necessary to get warrant articles to the next town unit. So I've looked at that schedule and just generally, so, so you know, as you're looking at this list, the formal date for having draft ordinance revisions and warrant articles of any type um to the town office so they can be presented to the select board is the, I think it's the you know, last day of February to the first day of March this time around. We do have some flexibility and I've had a conversation with Eric about this because in years past, um, because the planning board has to do its own hearing process on any revised revisions, there's that extra step. And it's another step in the review process that gives people more opportunity to look at, at what we're proposing. Um, we do have some flexibility, you know, into March if we need it. And I, I checked back in with Eric to make sure that that's true this year as it has been in past years and, and he's comfortable with that. But I think for planning purposes, we should, we may keep the first of March in mind as, as kind of the soft deadline. And then we'll see, we'll see where we are. So, um, what would work best for everyone? I mean, one way to do this would just be to go down through the list, one bullet at a time. Um, now some things, as I said, I, I think we need to have some substantive conversation about. Um, others are similar and we do need to, um, ultimately by the end of the meeting, if you could think about if there are pieces that you'd be willing to draft or do the reviews on. I think there are some obvious ones like the, you know, the solar, which was the same. Um, it makes sense, you know, if you're willing and able that, that, you know, that you would do that, but, um.
Tonight you could do a lot more than.
Well, we'll make it much longer.
Yeah. I, I'm, excuse me.
It wasn't a question.
I'm here to serve.
Okay.
Sure, we'll come up with an equitable division later.
Um. So. Unless you want to approach this in some other way.
No, that's very good.
Okay, let's just start at the beginning then. And the first, uh, the first issue is uh clarification of the matters regarding permit transfers and permits running with the land. And this had come up a couple of times. I think the last time we talked about this was in the context of the, one of the marijuana permits. Um, ultimately, we determined that, you know, under the marijuana establishments ordinance, those are not transferable. So it's kind of an odd example, but nevertheless, in the course of that, you look at the language um having to do with permits running with the land. And the only place that really shows up and there's any conversation about it is in the standard condition. And so, and it's not very complete or very clear. And I think that it's a matter of modifying the language, adding some language for the priority. Um, I did have some conversation with the town attorney about that. I had some questions for her and she was quite helpful in that regard. And I know, Peter, you had, um, you had an interest in this, if I remember correctly, as well.
Um, I guess I expressed an opinion, but the only place I saw it and I actually spent part of the afternoon trying to get from start to finish a pair of land use ordinance um was in Article six, section three A, which doesn't use the term running with the land. It doesn't do it later. One other place of which, but Article six, section three, it says, three A, it says site review, uh, shall not be required for the direct replacement of a conforming structure provided there is no expansion or use or change of use in the structure. I don't know any place in the ordinance where it talks about change of ownership, but um, making a difference in terms of site review or not site review. Uh, but, um, this is, uh, it's still been my thought without seeing anything specific in the ordinance, without, in the absence, if there was nothing else, it's always been my thought that the change of ownership, if there's no change of use associated with it, should not trigger um a full scale site review.
So what is there with the section between like we, we approved, you know, something to the show and so on, and so that, that those changes run with the land. Whereas we approved a retail establishment. It also seems to run with the land, uh, seems to be more, you know, for permit that if you change, if something substantially changes. So.
Yeah.
And that's the one with the land, I mean. Well, like, of the art, art place that we've looked at.
Yeah.
I guess that runs with the land, but if he wants to build another rock there or someone wants to change it into a dairy farm or, or not a dairy farm.
Yeah.
Don't encounter them. Then, but so, and when you determine whether that person has to come and put a planning board or the CEO, is it, is it, is it real change? Or substantive change?
Yeah.
I mean, a pity or whatever impact and produce.
My, my understanding from, and this comes in large part from the conversation with the town attorney is that if if what someone is proposing to do is a change of use, which is fine in some way, the ordinance, then it would require approval.
Fine, so like if we approve the retail establishment and there's still going to be a retail establishment that's selling, instead of selling groceries or selling toys. And then for the review, seven two reviews.
I think it would, but I'm not sure whether it's a, whether it requires extensive review. You could argue about, but it's a change of use.
No, okay, that would be, you're selling one thing and then tomorrow you're selling something different. You're selling, you're selling something. So it doesn't seem like a change of use.
Um.
Yeah, it used to be defined by the line, but the ordinance.
If one day you're fixing paths and the next day you're selling groceries, then that's, that's two totally different things.
For, for each of these, would it be helpful to start off by stating what problem we're trying to solve? Like is, is it a problem or is it not a problem? And I heard earning the land as being a problem, but what what problem are we trying to solve?
Well, I think it's a problem because the ordinance is not clear on, on what it means and how to apply that concept.
So we need to tell applicants who that, whether it was something with the land or whether they, they change the use, then we need to come back.
Well, there's, there's a standard condition already that talks about that. Um, it's number ten. Um, and I think as a general land use concept, as a legal concept, it is generally the case that zoning and permits can run with the land.
It also is very explicitly stated on their two hundred and fifty page one of the theme, which I see only commit, commit, oh, run with the land.
Yeah, that's the one place where it's explicit.
Yeah, I think that's probably the only blank sleeping, um, other than the, um.
So it seems like in one section of permanent centers, when you should destroy, you need to buy the lands and this goes.
Yeah.
We, we would give them, well, applications, that, that sort of problem that's are you aware of, and or there's something to view.
Right.
This is what complains.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and that is a situation where the approval is tied to the person and not the, not the land.
So, so if that goes and sells the house kind of home, if you're a new person, I must say, even if they want to continue the same home occupation.
Yeah, they have to get their own license.
So would like a daycare, would that be a whole one case?
I think it, I think it could be, but it's also a recognized use of one.
So if you buy a house that has a registered, you know, state licensed daycare, we could have to, you know, invite that, so we can, we can do the run of daycare, because you have to go through the whole process and if that kind of is running with the.
There would soon odds and still be required to go through the whole DHTS process to get a daycare license from the state. Why would we want to go through a whole site review on them too?
If, if it's a site review, I mean, my immediate reaction is that that approval would, would run with the land.
But that would, you know, that would very much affect the, whether or not they buy one, probably.
Right, right. And, um, like I said, it is in the, if it's three, three to twelve plus kids. Um, it requires planning board approval almost across the board. And so that would, I guess, I agree with the box out, so not looking at the land, I assume.
Right.
Yeah.
I think the language in, in the, uh, is it Article eight? On page fifteen. That was. Um. Um, even though it's for seasonal conversion, I actually think it's, you know, it could be modified that language to be more, more specific, but it's pretty good, but essentially the concept that if the planning board approves something or whatever use that is and the conditions of it, when they can be transferred to another owner on the same property, right? But
I agree with you.
If the site use changes, then it would have to be considered with the site use. So if they, if they changed something, it was approved, like they want a larger sign and the sign was not approved, then they don't think of the approval for that piece, right?
But you also got to interject that if it's approved by the co-ops, which many things in our ordinance are, is it applied the same way. Uh, you know.
It would, it would, I would argue, I would argue, yes.
I think we'd have to put something in there that says that.
I would argue that's, that's, that's true, but let's say there was something that was approved by the government officer and then they changed the use, right? They changed it to a restaurant or whatever, something that required planning board approval, that otherwise wasn't approved.
Then it has to go.
You know, it should be like a new application.
Right.
So a new use is a new application. If it's an existing use and there's extending the existing use and it's already been approved by yourself under your jurisdiction or the planning board. Under it's, I don't see a reason to redo it. If the, if the new, if the new owner or person running it is willing to do everything the same way, I mean, that's, that's what this sets, you know. The purchaser or leasing may assume all permissions granted by, by permit and shall be responsible for complying with all standards and special conditions of approval.
I guess it comes down to granularity, uh, you know, how you see the use changing. Um, you know, it could be, yeah, well, let's, maybe it's, you know.
Yeah.
It's us, the use changing was defined included.
Well, the problem is it doesn't apply to marijuana establishments. Is there a finite list of times when it doesn't apply?
That's, I, to my knowledge, that's the finite list.
That's the finite.
It's specifically stated in the refilled, um, marijuana establishments ordinance that that license is not transferable.
Okay.
Hmm. And what state too?
Would it be easy just to clarify that it applies in all cases except this and that, and that begun, instead of finding there's some instance in the only left? Just say it generally applies.
Well, you know, I, I think that Jack's suggestion was a good one. And that is that there are some general sections in here that talk about zoning and, and it seems like that would be the place to put those general concepts.
I think that would be. We, in the subdivisions, we allow minor revisions. Some, and some things can't be revised. So I wonder if, if we accommodate a store and it was agreed that they would only be open till seven P M. And they or anyone comes in and says, I want to be open till nine P M. We could decide whether or not that's a minor revision.
Yeah.
So we go through that full process.
Yeah. Yeah. Um.
That's a good example, but
Yeah, it is.
I like that concept because I think you weren't trying, you know, we're not here to make life difficult for the community. So we think the idea we need to, it doesn't, it doesn't have a material impact on the, the use of the property. Nothing's changing to, to minor thing like a sign size or hours of operation, something that, something that was approved prior, but they want to change. Maybe it's, maybe it's a little illegal, a little gray about the degree in which the definition would be made there in a way. You know, so they could be used to be more helpful, publicly, be more helpful to the.
Yeah. And they'll, you know, we have some things that definitely why are new buildings or something too.
Yeah. And at first I had actually suggested that, um, you know, in the case of we could amend, I mean, if permit, maybe run with the land, but if somebody came in and wants to do something different, as you're suggesting. Um, she suggested that we might want to define amendment and revision. And then we would have something, you know, to point to, you know, and some indication of what the process would be. Um, and it wouldn't require, you know, reapproval necessarily, but just accommodation for change. And she had also pointed out a couple of other things that, um, I think were, were interesting. Uh, one was that if we were to approve something, say we approved, uh, the construction of a new, or a new business or a new industry in town and it was sold before it was completed or sold before it was occupied and before they started to run that the planning board, therefore, even though the general uh, concept is that the permit would run with the land, in a case like that, um, we could require, uh, financial and technical, physical, technical assurance be provided by the homeowner. Uh, because those are a couple of standards that are tied directly to the person and not to the operation of the business. Um, you know, that's not likely to happen very often, but she suggested that it might be a good thing to include. And there are also situations where, um, well, let's use the, the car place again, because that's recent. Um, if he operated it for a year and then abandoned it, not they will, but if he abandoned it and it just sat there and it wasn't used for some period of time, that the ordinance should address what happens in that situation. And she was suggesting that it's, you know, it's appropriate to say, yeah, if somebody wanted to come back in and reopen something there, uh, it would need to be approved. But we would have the ability to set, you know, the period of time, um, as the town.
Would that be a full review or? Then someone.
Well, I mean, it depends. I, you know, I think we've got flexibility in how we write it, but I think, um, you know, in general, she was saying, you should look at this running the, the triggers for when a permit no longer runs with the land. She likens to the non-conformal uses section. And there is some discussion there about, um, you know, if you don't conduct an activity for a certain period of time and and if you don't construct something within uh, a year as is already in the, in the ordinance, those things, um, might, might trigger a situation where it doesn't.
On the earlier point, we were talking about, oh, don't we require, um, when we're, when we're permitted these, um, solar, um, frames? Then we require them to, um, promise basically to put it back or take things apart.
The inclusion.
When they're finished.
Yeah.
Because there's, that would be the kind of thing that, you know, you would want to, with if, if there was somebody that, so new owner, you would want them to come in and promise to do that.
Um, with solar, are you talking one of the last?
Well, uh, that was an example of, of a situation where, where we required that, right? So.
I think communication powers and it says similar language in that ordinance as well about.
Yeah. Looking at that, right? So anything that, where, where we would want to do that, you know, that would be a situation where.
Where.
When this early.
Right. Yeah.
Does the original owner remain liable when you have to sell property?
But for what?
If it's silver, like they, they, and I'm not calling obligations, I think, then.
What's how they, what's how they, it's, it's, that's how they legally, you know, she would turn, so. So, no, but.
I thought, I thought the town would require them to, I think it was, it's in our ordinance that they have the responsibility to bring that back to. Well, we have, we actually secure like a bond. Yeah.
Right. We're worried on the infrastructure side of the, of the task, but not the other liability, not other liability.
So like, somebody's going to be responsible for, you know, with that site at some point in time. And if, if you sell it and you had the original liability, you don't get the selling liability, but you still have that liability. The, the, the new owner, that you could tell when you go around, they're assuming liability. Uh, I still think that we would, we could swing back to the. No, look more than some state owned, I understand, one of the post building. Right, so there's, there's a bond.
In that example, in the, in the solar case, perhaps, perhaps a little clearer than in other cases.
So should someone go through and study this and come back and recommendation of what should I, or live in a lot?
Um, no, I don't, I don't think we're, you know, I think we've talked about some of the issues that need to be addressed. And I think with most of these things that, um, you know, we need to develop some language and then we come back together and look at it as a group and we can figure out what works and that everyone's comfortable with. And, um, um, I don't know if there's someone in particular who's interested in doing this. I've already done some work on it. Um, I'd be, I'd be happy to continue that or give somebody else.
Oh, so she.
Okay.
Sounds like Jack is insane. Well, even to a, but major minor amendment, right at the beginning of the section playing what you heard before, couldn't you just have a paragraph right there? First name, since, run with the land or don't.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Cause you'll, we find this under. Cause you'll, we find this under, we don't want.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, that is.
They're looking at business, I'm not looking at what a rule of law would pay.
Right, and then the only other place really where it's talked about is in that, um. The standard condition number ten, and it does do a very good job.
We just had a paragraph, right at the beginning of the permit section, that's kind of clear.
Yeah.
Well, that's, you should look at things in the area they should be, if they.
Yeah.
Sounds like Jack's. Now, insisting. Yeah, I, I think there's a need to clarify that Article six, section three A, because right now what it literally says. Is the site review process applies to all activities that require planning board review. Except for direct replacement of a conforming structure. Um, and, and, uh, well, I don't think that's what we actually do, um, uh, which is certainly run with the law.
Um, that was Article six.
Article six, section three A.
Then eight D four is the.
I'm sorry, which one?
Eight D four. It's the single bill in.
Okay. So second bullet, consider the current requirement that solar projects require approval under the provisions of Article nine. That's the commercial, industrial and infrastructure district. Uh, and determine if it should be changed, so just a little background around that, some of you I'm sure remember it, but. Um, the last solar project that we approved. Went through the commercial, industrial, infrastructure district adoption procedure. Because we had added that requirement to that C I D zone provision. After our approval of the first solar project. Um, with some concern about the, um, I guess the, uh. The completeness, the comprehensiveness of the review process.
I think it was, uh, wasn't it, uh. You questioned whether C I B applied to infrastructure. And Kristen Collins said that.
Yeah, yeah, she did say. And so initially, um, you know, it was, it was determined, um, as Jack points out, that the town attorney didn't believe that. Infrastructure fell under the provisions of the C I D, so we had gone back and. Made it clear that large infrastructure projects wouldn't be covered by that C I D zone adoption procedure. And, um. Um, I think most of us were here for that whole process, uh, Dana, I know who weren't.
I wasn't, you know.
But it's, uh, it's Article nine in the, in the ordinance and it's not a division. Actually, the only two times it's been used were over the past couple of years. There were two projects that came before us and we used that process. One was the second expansion on John Pushing's storage business. Because it triggered was to equip it for climate, for that commercial zone. Uh, standard, and then the other was the solar project. Because infrastructure is specifically included in that. So we used that process for both of those projects. And when we emerged from the other side, um. I know Peter, you had a perspective on that, and I think it was raised a couple of times that we should talk about it. Um, and figure out if it's something we wanted to continue. I mean, if we have another solar project, did we gain anything by going through that C I D contest? Do we want to do that again? Or now that we have the solar ordinance and. The site review process, is that sufficient? So I think that's the question.
We, since we have the solar ordinance, I don't think we really need C I B. Also for that. I don't want to see it.
I mean, the purpose of the C I D originally was the vision, I assume, to. Allow more opportunity for. Uh, I don't know, I, I say, I gotta say this right, but it's gonna bring attention to. From the community to a large, to a, a large development.
Right, right.
Usually large.
Then more divisions, yeah, a long time ago, was, I mean, did the zoning for the town. They didn't want those controls to have a visibility in some areas, commercial or industrial. And so he decided to re-slow the bishop. But he couldn't propose it somewhere. But he had to go through.
Right, and so, and then I'll just point out two things that have changed, another, one thing that's changed since I was written, and that is that. The town moved to. A, a very formal, more secret ballot kind of process for all of its. Books in a foreign, versus what this was written, they think so much more. Um, you could, uh, you could, um, call a special meeting in a different format. And it was probably, um. You know, it wasn't as expensive of a process or time consuming process as it is today. So that's the first, the second thing I would say also is solar. It's not applicable to all solar, it's only if a developer. Currently, I'm, I'm not saying I'm for, I agree with what you said, I don't think it's needed, so I'm just saying though, but don't. It doesn't mean all solar projects fall under this, it's only if the solar project is of a certain size and, and. Many of the solar projects could, could occur without that process anyway. It's just the one that we had was large enough to trigger that concern.
And the one, the one big thing or a big thing that the C I D process requires. That the regular processes wouldn't, is approval of champion. So, and, and that makes the C I D process quite different from anything else.
Right, and so it's a philosoph, in my mind, it's philosophical. Do you feel like the board should have that authority to approve something that's significant impact to the community? Or do you think, whatever, just certain size, the community should have a say in that impact? I personally.
It does have a say. But when you're here.
They, they do, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, but, um. I'm always, I'm always a believer in. When something's big enough and more impactful, the more people should know about it, the more people should have a say in it. So I, I would lean towards more of the C I D process in that case. But then again, maybe there's something we could write that's advisable or exposure for those kinds of things.
And the, you know, applying C I D to the solar projects was. It was a little bit odd in that the trigger, the general trigger is five thousand square feet or greater. So if, you know, a Walmart came to town or something like that, we triggered that five thousand square feet and we have to go through that C I D process. But what we applied, um, the five thousand square feet to, in the case of solar, was the surface of. Well, that's just, yes.
I, I think from what I hear from people in town, and about, you know, the whole, what we're talking about. I think that first solar project was as or more impactful than a Walmart. It was out there, it was the first time that there was this large structure. Covered up the fields and people weren't happy, people were like, why didn't I get involved? But to say that, you know, it's a Walmart or a FedEx terminal or something. I think, you know, a huge solar project is as impactful, and so you should really think about. People should be involved in that.
But of course, we pervasively regulate, and we should pervasively regulate that through solar ordinance for those projects. And there's ample opportunity for public input during that process.
They're not, people won't come to meetings, but they might vote, I think you should stay waiting. Because a solar, you, you kind of drive. Hundred mile day, the land that she destroyed for so long. With a Walmart impact, and then John Pushing is showing you that.
Some communities have a requirement for a town meeting, um.
Hmm.
Specifically for any solar.
Yeah, and I think.
We don't have that.
We stay where we're at with the five thousand feet. I think that's pretty reasonable, and it gives people a chance to actually vote on it. Because it does, they, they, all the bulldozers and melties have, for the solar.
They voted on the last one, right?
Hmm?
The Norwegian got voted on. And there was, what was the vote? It was.
There were about fifty people, maybe?
Yeah.
No, there were more than fifty, but no one liked to talk, they're going, given the opportunity to talk at a public meeting, I don't, I told almost no talk.
That's right.
Yeah, there wasn't really, um, people weren't quite signed. And so we.
But that one was a controversial, it was behind the wood line, you can't see it, everybody knew that.
And it was kind of.
Kind of small.
The meeting where you couldn't hear anything anybody said on the floor either. If you were sitting in the bleachers, you couldn't hear anything that was said. For, for any, even the Stevens. Set two rows up, you couldn't hear anything.
So.
One, one thing too, I mean, is, do you consider a, uh, solar farm to be a. Commercial industrial activity? Well, the problem is, is the definition of structure. In our, sober, especially covered solar panel. So if we have structure, this is solar pack, so that's considered a structure, we have more than, but there, those panels are more than five thousand square feet. So it's structured.
Hmm.
That's, that's why it comes under.
We went back to and included, um. Like Article nine is now titled commercial, industrial and infrastructure district. And infrastructure was, was added, and that was in the action.
So that covers something.
It covers.
Yeah. We can talk, I mean, I just can't remember who was on the board at the time, but I mean, we didn't have anything. We had an unregulated usage in this town completely, which is why this all is come about. But the, the, it falls under infrastructure in our table. In our definition, because that's for other things of equal complications on. Like a lot of, uh, cell tower or, or, or a wind, a wind tower on your property or. Uh, anything like that, so it is, it is properly defined. Um, how we define like the surface area and the usage, those, those things you define in the solar ordinance. But those are very standard industrial definitions of how it works in the industry, so there's nothing happening normal about how it's actually. Work footage or, you know, the, the, uh, solar energy systems, that, that's all very standard language in, in that role. Which, which is helpful to the developer. So, um. I don't think there's, so I don't think there's any debate about that, but I do think for. I don't know, I think the C I D thing was just a question, I think it's a good, good idea, but I think it's a question of. We think it's the right level of additional transparency.
Is, is the real question whether something like this should require a public vote or not, if we use the C I D means to do that.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know.
Yeah.
If somebody want to build a power plant and refill, which, as, what these things are. I'd want to vote on it.
Yeah.
So I think Brandon's been feeling the same way.
Yeah. Well, that's how we felt, I think that's why we do it that way. And the question is, do we, should we put it in the ordinance or should we continue to use the C I D? Right, you could do either, right?
Yeah.
The ordinance.
You can't keep doing what we're doing, right?
But then they're, then you're calling that out, so you're simply, or you could just leave it there and some trouble.
Yeah, the only thing with the C I D is, um, you know, it requires a town vote and it's a. Second process, they, you have to do that first, you go through that C I D process and an application gets put in and. And, um, um, ultimately it goes to town vote. So there's a time, timing issue upfront, um, it takes more time to do that.
Yeah, and it's even worse than that right now, because of the way the Article nine is phrased. Um, there's an obligation for the town to hold a special meeting for the vote. So if someone wanted to delay. If the board select, the select board wanted to not, want to slow walk something, they could wait until June. Uh, I think there should at least be, the very least should be a requirement, this applies not just to solar, but to all these projects. That, that the meeting be scheduled, be held within ninety days of the, of select board. Uh, has, going ahead with a planning board recommendation. I mean, there should be some time limit, so that these things can't be, go from January to, to June before they're voted on. Um, right now, they're not, right now, it says that the town is not required to hold a special town meeting to consider a, a rezoning proposal. Um, there's one more thing I suggest if we're gonna, um, it's again, plus not just a solar. Well, why is it? Again, if we believe, uh, that the town votes necessarily, why shouldn't, why shouldn't the planning board decide review first? Before the town vote, right now, the town votes on the concept of rezoning and then we do site review.
Yeah.
Uh, that's the right order.
Yeah, it, because, I mean, it's the big broad zoning concept first.
Okay.
You know, are we gonna do that, we're gonna allow a rezoning to allow this thing in? And then it's all the detailed site review, and I think that's why it's done that.
It's the right order, because there's many examples in Maine where a town has voted a project down. And then it saves the applicant a lot of time and money, because they don't have to go through that whole process, only to have that happen after the fact, which has happened. I do, okay, I understand what you're saying. I still think this Article nine, I remember in the old days when there was a slaughterhouse. And it was a church road or north road, um, and there were things, there were industrial facilities that created a lot of controversy. And were justifiable, so. Um, but I don't know why we double regulated a certain facilities and not others. If we have a pervasive, a, and we do solar ordinance. Why are we double regulating that particular form of, uh, enterprise?
It's like, you're, you're not, oh, if, if Ray wanted to expand his store. By a square foot, if he actually goes to the C I D. And once he gets him off that foot, it's just like, you know. But it's not, yeah, we're not picking on solar, it's, it's another business.
And it's only the large solar projects, most, most medium solar projects.
Solar is, is just another, another business, whether it's a dollar general or a solar general.
I think, I think though, Peter, it's because the, you could, it's an overlay district, right? So we're actually allowing the opportunity for someone to be rezoned in another district, but otherwise it wouldn't be allowed through this process. Otherwise, if we take it away, then there's no opportunity for that for the community. They could only then have a, a permit in a particular zone that's already.
Yeah, unless, unless you would go through a standing while rezoning process.
And that would be, that's a big wrong prediction.
And, and that, that Henry is part of the original reason that this thing was put in the, in the ordinance in the first place was to. And Jack, you mentioned this, to, you know, accommodate the proposal for, um, a, a commercial or industrial. Facility or establishment of, of some type under a, a prescribed process. That would allow the zoning to be changed upon a day. And there really isn't anything like that, other than just a straight rezoning process, which isn't specific to the proposal.
I think, I mean, I agree with Dana and Brandon, I think if you get someone with. Large enough, I think you should, people should have an opportunity to do.
I mean, we, you know, we got this.
Yeah, not, not say solar, I'm saying, it could be, it could be a law, right? Take it away, it's, we take it away for every.
Or maybe they, your suggestion of the time.
Yeah, that's a good idea, I like that idea.
Uh, I, we need to be, you know, we could, we could talk about doing something like that, we need to be kind of. Careful about it, because there are, um, specific and different, uh, notice requirements and so forth for town meetings. And the, you know, the steps leading up to a town meeting are. Are quite different than just a regular hearing, and so that would all have to be accommodated, and we'd have to get buy-in from the select board then. So it gets a little complicated in that regard, doesn't mean we couldn't pursue it, but it's just different.
But it's the example of the ones we did, they only two times we used it. I don't think those were, seeing, I can't remember how long that sort of. No, no, we, we actually, the town meeting was in February, it, uh, was in February, so it wasn't very long. But at the time, we got cooperation, I mean. I think we could tell the applicant was told theoretically this could go till next June.
Yes, yeah.
I see, and it's also halfway through the knowledge, or they, they'd already been going down the site review process.
Right.
When they have the notice, so, so don't need to, a lot of funding in that.
So don't need to, well, I'm offended in that.
What happens here first?
Yeah.
I mean, the intent is not to punish people in process, right, I think it's for charity.
Yeah.
We're totally agree with you, so how do you make it fair?
You could have had a drug, you could have, you could have.
I think we should do the minimum time we can, we should find out what the requirements are. You know, there's obviously absence due back of the process, blah, 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 but ninety days is probably. Sounds right.
So that would require a special town meeting, right?
Yes, special.
Yeah.
And I, you know, and I think it depends on, you know, what the time of year is, I, I, I had specific conversations with, uh, with Eric, we talked to the select board. When we were trying to queue those up for a town meeting and. They were certainly willing to do a special town meeting as, as soon as they could. But if it got. Close to the regular town meetings, they didn't want to have to duplicate the effort into a special immediately followed by a regular, so it depends on the timing of that. I mean, yeah.
I also think it's worth, I also think it's about optics too, with the community, you know, you don't wanna. Seem like your, your purpose is not to slip something in, right, you gotta, you gotta make sure people are. Have enough time to, to realize it, so I, I think also. If, for example, somebody really wanted one, then they'll sort of, on time, unless. I don't, I don't, there is a lot of cost associated with this town meeting, and so if, if it was something like that, it's a large developer. You know, you could ask them, you could ask them to pay for some of that cost.
Yeah, they do need to actually pay the. Some cost or.
And therefore, because that's always a potential select for has, it's about how much money it costs a town.
Well, the standard rules are in June, November, would that count as?
Yeah, anytime the town comes together.
So June and November would be covered, definitely then.
Well, November isn't covered, it's usually a, it's a special, if it's a November, it's regular, it's June, you know.
But we could have ballot to.
You can pick one.
Yeah, you can have a ballot.
And my understanding is that if you do a secret ballot, I can't remember all the reasons for it, but it's, it's. More cumbersome and more expensive than just on, on the floor.
Yeah, but the town voted on that thirty years.
No. What did we do in February, uh, last February, did we pass? Were their ballots distributed at the, uh, special meeting, I don't remember.
It was a voice vote.
It was a voice vote, it was an outdoor vote, yeah.
No, it couldn't have been on floor, we have secret ballots.
It wasn't on floor.
It's on the floor, it's a special town meeting you can do on the floor, but otherwise we have to.
You know, for regular town meeting, if you're in a, you wouldn't be able to do that.
Well, that's more efficient.
So the, I mean, the other piece that's connected to this is, um. Um, bullet. Um. Bullet number, number three. And I think some of the things that we just talked about kind of fall into the bullet number three category, because, um, I included this one on the list. Because after we emerged from those C I D processes, part of our conversation was around, you know. You know, looking at the language in Article Nine, uh, and smoothing some of that out, um, I know that we came across some things that were. Oh, the language was, you know. Difficult to work with, it was not clear. Um, not a radical change to the process itself, but. Trying to clean up that language a little bit was, was part of the conversation as well. So. Um, I kind of give those two bullets, it's going together. The general cleanup. And then what are we gonna do about solar issues?
The answer is number two is that we're not gonna do anything except for maybe the timing, right?
And that seems to be the emerging consensus.
Not by Google, please.
That's a theater. Um, but, but looking at a, at a timeframe. For holding the town meeting. I'm trying to include something on.
Yeah, I'd say, I'd say explore a timeframe, that would. A great suggestion, Peter's wrong.
Yeah, I, I don't know what it would look like.
I would also suggest maybe. Thinking about some language like. At the next, at the next available, it probably says already, right, something like the next available. Town meeting and if they wanted to do a exact solar, they could burn, they could burn a cost without.
I think ninety days is quicker than it takes to get a subdivision, uh, approved. You could, you could get a solar field before the subdivision.
Well, that's, that's just, that's just. So I don't think.
And there's still, there's a process before the town.
Step one is. Yeah. Within that, I mean, assuming that is the number, but.
So I, I want to be clear on that fourth. Well, was it the third or the fourth, it's the third one. It's, uh, you said, well, it reads clarified, modify certain provisions of Article Nine based upon P B's experience for Paul. Where you said that's related to the previous one, is that related to C I D, is that what you meant, Paul?
Yeah, yeah, the C I D.
I do remember that, there was some weird things that came on.
Yeah, I mean, something like, there, there were some, some redundancies, some odd language. Some lack of clarity. So I think it just needs. It needs a, a look, some cleanup in that regard. Well, we can, we can come back to these and you can think about, yeah.
You're on solar before you skip over it, I don't, I don't know if you just want these large overview type issues, but on solar, there's some smaller issues I'd like to see changes on.
Yeah, um, one of the, uh, in the. Second category, other ordinances related to land use on the list. Uh, one of the things we have listed is the solar ordinance, just for a general review. Well, okay, so, uh, anyone who thinks it's been taken on Article Nine?
Yeah. I would, I would. No, it was, I, no. I would draft these people don't agree with. It's probably a bad thing, I mean.
Or you do the, the, uh, the plan open.
Well, I mean. I had one more comment about Article Nine, the problem is not works inside, it don't practical impact. Now, I just, I don't know who drafted this, but. Uh, in Article, in section two A. This, the, the proposed change shall be consistent with the town's comprehensive plan and shall be keeping with the town's. I would insert the word large of rural character, I mean. The word rural implies we're not in the woods here, we, we have mixed uses. Uh.
Yeah.
And we do want enterprises which will help employ people. If they don't interfere with our, our way of life. I, I. So if I were gonna start fully with Article, with Article Nine, I'd probably suggest that too, but.
You can do that.
It, it.
You could take rural right out completely.
No, that, that phrase.
It's also in the next subsection two, which is really weird. But anyway.
I think what we write now is preservation of town character. That's a.
Okay, well, if you want to draft those three little things, I'll do it.
The state is limited using the word character in any land use decisions. So character is something you might want.
I, you know, I think what we need to go back to was the comprehensive plan. Because that, you know, that, that kind, that talks about these kinds of issues.
I'm, I'm happy to take a stab at nine, because I got a feeling I'm doing the solar, so. Um, I think they're trying, we can.
You'd have to talk to Eric about it.
What? I'll, I'll talk to him on time, and I'll present something. For Peter.
Okay, great, all right. Uh, fourth bullet, incorporate the provisions of the new manufactured housing law, so I took a, I took a closer look at that. And I, I think that essentially what we're talking about there. Is just taking language from the statute. And making our ordinance consistent with it, and, and the crux of it is that. Any manufactured housing, which includes mobile homes. Um, is allowed to be located wherever. Other single family dwellings are allowed to be located in town. And, you know, that's not currently the case in our ordinance, um, but it is now state law, you know, where some revisions made to clarify that just this past session. And. That is.
Is some options.
There, yeah, there are, there are some options that you can add, like you want to talk about, I think.
One is they can require a combination. And one is you can tell her pitch meeting. Yes, and one is somebody outside you need to do with that.
Yeah. Um.
That is state law?
It, it, it says that towns have the option of requiring that. It kind of suggests to me that, you know, we would require that of other single family dwellings in town, which we don't. Which I think might be problematic.
Well. It is, however, the typical distinction in the way the law used to read the state law between manufactured homes and mobile homes. Um.
And modular.
I'm sorry, modular and mobile. That's what I think. Um.
There's a slab, that would be foundational.
Yeah.
So needing, needing a slab to distinguish the difference between a. Mobile, what I think is a mobile home versus a modular home.
Well, they said it, but a, a lot of mobile homes were on gravel pads.
Right.
Now you have to have a concrete slab.
In order for it to be a manufactured home.
No, you just have one.
Just have.
Yeah, if we chose that option, we don't have to choose that option.
And it, it talks specifically about, it says municipalities shall permit manufactured housing, and that term now includes mobile homes.
Mobile, manufactured, and modular.
Uh, to be placed or erected on individual house slots where your single family dwellings are allowed, subject to the same requirements. As single family dwellings, except as otherwise provided. And it goes on to say that municipalities may establish design criteria, including but not limited to a pitched, shingled roof, permanent foundation. And exterior siding that is residential in appearance. Um, the requirements, uh, can't have the effect of circumventing the purposes of the section. And, um, there's some other, some other provisions. So, you know, the bottom line is that. Our ordinance needs to reflect that, that manufactured housing can't be located anywhere that single family. Dwellings are.
Does that apply like in this, in the subdivision, one of the. Restrictions is no mobile home.
Subdivisions can still be allowed to.
Definitely. Like, we even know a lot about this.
So, I. Well, it's kind of real.
Oh, that's true.
Can you realize?
Yeah.
Yeah, um.
Geez, sounds like Brandon's the perfect guy to write up the.
Well, I don't know, like. I don't know why we. I don't know the benefits of the foundation over the gravel pad or.
I think for mobile homes, trail, I want to speak that, I'm not buying it, but from Mayday, I would be against. Forcing a slab. Because there are people that put them in and then build out, and then they sell the trail, sell all of that. Concrete now is insane money. It's, it's crazy, I don't want to cost a poor slab. And now you're stuck with the flat that you're up in the mall, whereas a gravel pad, you could. Click over, and now you're along. So, at least in the case of a, of a trail or a mobile home, I would.
But that is true.
I think they all come with a pitch crew, man, I think, don't they?
No. On the mainstream.
But it's still engineered with the solar group. It wouldn't be this one, the manufacturer.
Where are the current L U O, we did deal with this issue? Where do we look at all the?
But we have to define. Um. Houses and structures we do in that kind of home, raising the state.
You can't say shingled roof, that might mislead.
Right, the other, the other place that shows up, Peter, is, um. My, in the, in the table of uses.
Uh huh.
Um. The residential section, which is the first, uh, there, it says mobile homes. And it doesn't allow them in a number of different districts.
But now it does, yes.
And, but now it does, in any district where we allow a single family dwell, that needs to be changed to allow them.
And the pitch team. It's not required on. Other buildings, it shouldn't be required on buildings. You can build a building with a flat roof, you can build that.
So. Yeah, that, that's.
It seems like you're adding a cost.
I mean, that's, that's. That's what I was suggesting, you know, to my knowledge, we don't have a requirement that just, you know, a stick-built, single-family dwelling, a pitched roof, I mean, it's like wood, but.
But that can do.
But there's nothing that demands to some, I think.
But the spirit, the spirit of the state law, supposedly, the, the concept behind this is to provide. I think, right, more affordable housing.
Entry level.
Entry level housing.
Or it's older, but.
Exactly. That's not necessarily, one big part of it was inclusion. And people, they felt that, you know, trailer people, whatever, were being treated differently. So by putting all of those under manufactured housing and allowing this, people. Are supposed to feel better about themselves and their property and everything, that would, you know, create, uh.
Okay.
That kind of thing.
Okay, so it's more equity in the market, but also, also then. But it's supposed to create more affordable housing.
Yeah, it's part of the affordable housing.
Well, I mean, it sounds like we're saying that you have to allow and say that everyone in town, but you can still mess with those people if you want to. Like, you gotta put a foundation under it, you know.
Yeah, so I guess that was my question, so like, is that really the spirit of, I don't, space travel, dude, I guess I would say. I mean, we don't, we're not designers of models, if somebody can buy a home, which.
See, there is a lot of, you know.
It was a biscuit for your local planning boards, that, okay, we're changing your town rules radically by allowing manufacturing rooms everywhere, but we'll let you do this.
Where it's gonna bite us is. People with eight or ten acres that put three in the realm of. And then you have a mobile home package, or a mobile one pack. Depending on the new.
The new, the, the four.
The well, accessory, all in.
Not, not accessory, but four more dwellings on the, that's in your house.
Correct. I mean, making revenue, they don't have to live there.
You know, I, I don't know if it would have any net effect or not, but it might be a good idea to include something in the ordinance that. That makes a general statement about how mobile homes. Are allowed anywhere that single family dwellings are allowed and they are subject to all the same requirements.
Really?
Um, and. What do you know?
No, because still, there are requirements, state requirements that are manufactured before nineteen seventy-five. They're very, very strict on some of the requirements like that, where they don't do that in houses. So there, there are differentiators between the two different kinds.
Yeah, but that, that's, that's in the law, I mean, that's something that would have to be included in the L U O and the definitions or wherever it's appropriate. I, I agree, that's consideration.
It sounds like the drafters of this new state law have, but they've not paid attention to the prior definitions in state law. About the, the hot approved homes versus the older homes.
Right.
Uh, and. So unfortunately, they put in a situation where us, the towns, where we have to, we. And in theory, we, we have to allow some really lousy housing. Is where we wouldn't want it, we wouldn't let it happen on, you know, stick builds.
Mm-hmm.
Um. But anyway.
There are actually pretty much a lot of stick builds.
Yeah, of course. Um, the, uh.
I mean, there, there is some language in the state law about meeting construction standards for state certified manufactured housing for someone to fight a ten and. And, um, there is reference to the manufactured housing construction safety standards act, and. So there, there is some language in the state law that. Um, that addresses the. I guess the, the accuracy of some of the older.
There are, the answer was there, but when no child would have given the rest. So. It seems like we're changing, uh.
Because of the passage of time since this. Since the nineteen seventies, maybe there aren't many of those in recent times.
Probably not.
No. No.
Well, I think all of them must be kept on that ability.
So, the, the table of uses, what you can.
No, the way.
Well, we got one in town, you can't, they tend to break out.
Let's see.
Um. Yeah, to be consistent with single family dwellings. Right. And, and it might be, as I mentioned, you know, maybe we can consider some general statement, when I. Um. Maybe the place to put it, when we talked about the important housing language last time around. In the new, new language, new ordinance, um. I had reorganized the section that talks about dwelling units.
Yeah.
Uh, in the new, is that the new one down, okay, page forty eight. Performance retirements, and section one is about dwelling units, maybe this is the place to put something. And there's also a mobile home section in here that will need to be moved up. I expect, uh, mobile homes is H.
Then the.
And so that would need to be reviewed.
In the little, uh, table of. When it's done, it allows that.
Yeah, yeah, the table of uses needs to be changed, and, you know, I'm thinking about something in, like, in section one, A, single family dwellings. Um. Maybe a cross reference or something that, that, um. Or maybe even a footnote that talks about this legislation, how it now includes manufactured housing, something like that, just so it's clear.
So, is this an issue, so I know that on a mainstream, right, is that, did that fall into this provision or not?
Yeah.
Maybe they use that. And an A D U is different than a mobile home.
Yeah.
That, I mean, an A D U could be a. In-law, apartment above a garage, and it comes to you, you know, two years of mobile home, that's in a U.
You, you could, right?
You, you could, there, there are some.
Provided it meets the inspection.
It'd be a pretty small house.
Yeah, it, it, there.
But I say the why, it doesn't have to be.
Right, there are some limits on, on accessory dwellings, there's a square footage limitation. There are some other requirements specific to accessory dwellings that are actually also in this section.
It also came right now. Maybe you have a short term rental.
Yeah, that's where we need to put that.
Also, well, you have a time period on a short term rent.
I don't know what that means, so it's a state law, but look it up.
Is thirty days.
So, you can rent, while you're at, one day, right?
Yeah, I think it can be rental, but it can't be short.
So, I'm, I'm.
Okay, um. I mean, um. Brandon, you, were you, were you talking about doing a portion of this?
Um, well, um, well.
Okay.
I don't know whether I qualify.
Tom, you're more experienced. Brandon, you want to see what we're doing on this one?
Sure.
I, I was wondering, would it be helpful, if we. Talk about single family dwelling, but we don't say, we don't define.
Well, what we, what we define is, we do define dwelling unit, I think. Then, we look. There is, there are definitions. And I think that it's under dwelling unit, we're doing a lot. Yeah, and it defines single, two family, multiple family, in the definition.
Page twenty eight.
Says it says, um, there are true dwelling homes, it's, I mean. They want to do some dwelling unit, but not. So, we're going to be, so we're in. Right, we already have, in fact, home there. Why not be as, as you play?
Yeah, I mean, this says the term includes, includes mobile homes and tiny homes, so it means they're dwelling units, but. The requirements for them are different.
We have a definition of the modular and manufactured housing from twenty sixteen. One thirty six, I mean.
Yeah, there are the state law definitions, except that. That did exist. But.
Yeah, um.
So, again, in the. I mean, thank you, we found here before, we were not. The questions are a lot, I believe, in the law.
Yeah, and I don't know. Some random state law that we're talking about is titled thirty dash A. Section forty three fifty eight.
We had a copy, yeah. We can send it to us, you know.
Oh, do you repeat this?
Uh, thirty dash A.
Okay.
Section forty three fifty eight. And that's where the new language is having to do with manufactured housing. So there was an existing law at forty three fifty eight, and then most recently, a year or two ago, the legislature tweaked it a little bit. And. Uh, made some, made some changes.
Right, the tail end of the A D U issue, so.
Didn't we have in there that if you wanted a mobile home, it had to be a certain book back from section three to tell us feedback or something?
I don't remember that.
Heard that, that was the element.
I.
I, I don't know that that's true, go ahead, Mary, that would be here.
It would be here.
Cause that would be gone, if it existed. That you have to be a totally beat back. Off setting. It would double.
Okay.
Uh, you know, what might. Where that might have come from, this is just a guess. Um. Is that in that table of uses. It says mobile homes can't be in village, village residential, academic, rural residential, so there are all these zones and. Mobile homes are prohibited from, but they are allowed with a C E O permit in the rural district. And the issue. Well, I'll come back to some people, the issue is that all of the, the major roads in town, like seventeen. Um. They are zoned for at least the first four hundred feet as rural residential. And then behind that, many of them are rural, and so they could be, a mobile home could be there, but that's not a thousand feet, it's only like four hundred.
So, but with this new law that.
That's all we're going.
One more kind of a sorry, I guess, um, I urge you to make sure there's exclusionary, uh, clause in. Various places about, this does not include R Vs, recreational vehicles. And I, I need us to keep that there, because I have a lot of issues with that. And this is helpful.
It does say that one.
Yeah, I don't, I'm just saying, don't mess with it.
Right.
Is there landings you can put in there, but then we need to put creative, kind of, banks?
They have a trail path.
No, I mean, you could, you could put three of these on a, on a piece, on a piece of land, right?
Get that enough land.
I, well, you have to cut that.
Was it?
Land.
Is it two, or are there two?
Three, you have to, it's a park.
It's possible.
Well, not, not long.
Well, still have trailer parks, cause they're like subdivision. Which had very small.
It's a certain, no, it's a certain number of homes per set acre, so it's not like we can be all together.
Is it, is it two, two units plus one day to A D U for, I think, build up to two acres, I think.
You allow, what, three or four, if you have enough land?
Yeah, there's a piece in the new affordable housing law that allows four dwelling units on single personal properties. Provided you've got the acreage to accommodate those, so that, now that can be true of mobile homes as well as. As stick built.
That has to shake.
I've got the same one, which you could, I mean, you could.
Then you can run that.
Same one, right? Sure, I'm just wondering if there's something you can do.
Is that what you said, maybe, maybe this. Maybe this, I, I can't remember. Yeah, so, so you'll need to look at, you know, any of the definitions that might have been impacted in that table of uses and. Um.
And article eight.
Um, article eight performance standards for the dwelling unit language is all laid out. There's a whole, there's a single family dwelling unit fees, and so that would all have to be looked at, adjusted. In you of the, the statutory movement, if it's, um. Shouldn't send it to you if you want, and. Be welcome to this, I printed a hard copy of. The law, um, in its entirety, and then on top is the most recent legislation. It was only approved in March of this year, and it shows specifically what the changes were to the existing law.
Yeah, I think all I had before was a summary.
Okay.
And that would be a clear document. The areas of, um, the new law. Um, that's your town that focuses on, do we want to talk about. Finding those. Or not?
Well, the flexibilities are the things that we talked about, you know, you could require for instance, a pitch room or. Foundation or any of those kinds of things, and as was pointed out, we don't currently require that for. Other types of single family dwelling units. But we could put some kind of a channel, maybe a blanket statement somewhere about how. Or a footnote that says that this legislation, um. Now causes the land use ordinance to treat mobile homes the same way as the family dwellings are treated, so that would be on either side of the equation. You know?
Our current ordinance is about a story. If you don't, let's see them.
Yeah.
But that's still.
Well, I know it should be on a slab or foundation, but it's a mobile home.
Yeah.
It still has to stay normal. A feeling. And it's not gonna be mobile if you put it on a foundation, it is, but it's not.
Yeah, 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 practically speaking.
But anybody with a mobile home, with a trailer is good, plus security, if they want, or they don't.
There's a whole. Brandon, there's a whole cycle here on the mobile home standards.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's got things all up the windows and the side of them.
Yeah.
So, that already pretty well covers. Anybody's construction.
Probably does, yeah, cause there's, there is a lot.
It's all, you know, you could have a car.
Yeah.
It's in there.
Yeah. And that's all really old, too. Um, it's been there since I don't think I want. Do you might want to take a look at, maybe some of this crazy stuff that needs to come out, I, I don't know. Okay, um. Um.
Well, some of these are key.
Well, it, you know, I put on the agenda, I, I said eight months we finish sooner, and we could extend if we wanted to, but I don't. Really think there's any reason.
I can leave my.
Okay, all right, and I, I think.
You can keep going.
I can leave by you too.
Let's keep going.
Um, I, I don't think that we're gonna need to spend. A huge amount of time, um, we do need to talk about a couple more things, so, um. Like the next one, which is consider whether the L U O should include provisions related to short term rentals.
Where did that idea come? I, it was a bit of a completely.
No, no, it wasn't the complaint committee, it came up, and we were talking about. Uh, incorporating the provisions of the state affordable housing. Act into the ordinance. And short term rentals came up several times during that conversation. And, uh, Jamal. Jamal Torres, our consultant, had mentioned it a couple of times as well. And, uh, talked about what some other towns were doing in that regard. And at the time, you know, everyone, yeah, I think the consensus generally was, no, we don't want to get into that now, it's a complicated subject and. You know, we may not want to do anything about it, let's just set the whole conversation aside. And we'll take it up later and, and, uh, and have a discussion about it, so that time is now. Um. And it's on this list, because that's what happened with it, um. It came up several times, uh, during the affordable housing discussion. And, uh, we agreed, um, collectively that, you know, it was not something that. We have the time or ability to discuss at the time, and we would, uh, we would do it later, so.
Unlike the, no one's urging us to do this.
No, no.
When, uh. When we touched on it during the course of discussing affordable housing, I. Expressed, I questioned. Whether there's a lot of that going on in Rehfield, and Chip said, oh, yes, there is, so we might want to hear more from him. About the frequency of it, and also what problems, if any, he has observed with it.
Yeah.
Uh, because I can understand that in some municipalities. There's a lot of, there's evidence that. Short term rentals are depressing the market for affordable housing. But I don't know if that's true here.
Yeah, yeah.
Since I think most of the short term rentals here are late front. And I.
I don't know seasonal.
That wouldn't otherwise be a portable house.
And I, I can't imagine that many of them would qualify as a portable house of any kind.
Yeah, that's.
Um, but, uh, you know, I, I, I looked into this a fair bit, you know, on the. Regulation end of it, and there are a number of municipalities in Maine that have the doctor regulations. And most of them, not all, but most of them, the ones that I looked at specifically, were, um. Uh, there were coastal communities that was prominent, um, and. Coastal communities that were experiencing a lot of, uh, pressures of various types, um, from their perspectives, um. With regard to short term rentals, and some of the concerns that I can see were. Uh, number one, when you just suggested that, you know, they had a generalized concern, and I didn't dig deep into any of these, but I did know. Some of the concerns that were raised in various towns. Uh, they were concerned that short term rentals were impacting, uh, year round. The availability of year round dwelling units, and particularly affordable dwelling units, so that was a, that was a concern. I remember that coming up in particular when I read some. Uh, something about the town of Stoneington and the way they were dealing with this, and that concern was quite prominent. Uh, other towns were looking at, um, you know, they, they were having problems with. Parking and traffic and noise and other types of nuisances, and, and they were interested in addressing that kind of thing. And, um. Um, and the other, the other piece of it, um, is that. When we have talked about. Short term rentals. There is a linkage to the. Affordable housing act in that the state D C D, Economic Community Development. Was required to come up with these housing production goals. And municipalities in statute have a role in achieving those housing production goals. So I looked at that a little bit to see what that was, and in fact, D C D just issued a report in September. Establishing housing production dollars. And it's a statewide goal, how many new units have to be, uh, constructed and put on the market. And, uh, statewide and semi-county, and they also included. Um, rates of. Construction of new, of new homes. And so they set a rate, uh, as a goal, but all of that is brand new, and it happened in September. And I, you know, I think that that is just. You know, it's one of the pieces related to this discussion, but it's not in and of itself, I don't think that. You know, a reason to explore if anything on.
What are rate?
What?
What are rate is?
Oh, there is, there is, there's a rate for pandemic economy, you know, and. Actually, I don't know what it is, cause I didn't know. Um.
Chip, when you were downstairs, Peter was asking about impact, sort of, on miles. And did you have any thoughts on that?
Short term rentals?
Mm-hmm.
Beware.
Peter, elaborate a little bit.
This town, like many other small towns that thrive with, you know, summer residents. For years, they've been, you know, renting their houses. It's just the quiet little thing that's dust. I think if you. I think if you got into regulating short term housing. I think it it would have a lot of people attending meetings.
Well, if. It will, it will lower property values. It it will affect your property values.
And it will have the code officer very busy because a lot of people just.
And if a if a camper owner doesn't want that, most of those associations, they can vote, they can vote it out.
Yeah.
That that association, I don't think the town. Should regulate. I don't know if that's true. Yes, they can.
If they're an association, we can't have half the roads like that in town don't have associations. I deal with that. I deal with it all the time. Most of the campers don't support over association, some.
I did the research on home values over the last five years, so I can't remember how many communities in the state of Maine have. Regulated and commercialized that did not, but the housing cost in Maine is up. Twenty. Eight percent over the last five years following more than that. But there's the ones that went to regulate and didn't regulate, they're they're like a point lower than those that did regulate. So it had no. Real effect on the value of the homes.
It will affect the salary price.
It hasn't so far, not in the last five years. I mean, it's it's been pretty. It's been pretty high all the way around.
With a lot of lakefront property?
Well, lakefront property's through the roof anyway. And that's mostly because of the land use ordinance because you just can't afford to comply.
Alright. The other thing is though, you know, I've been in quite a few seminars about this. Is safety and liability in the town. Um, you know, if the town knows. And regulates this kind of thing, then there's an enforcement angle to it. So if somebody rents their house and they don't have the decks properly and they collapse, which has happened quite, you know, a lot in town. The town, you know, then takes on a liability because they've had, they, you know, they've recognized that these exist. So it's the, you know, it's a little secret like, well, can.
And and some, sometimes I I've chosen to regulate those businesses and they look at things like health and safety issues and that kind of stuff. And and nuisances and, you know, and all the, you know, the noise and all all of those issues.
And where they have, they've driven the value of the existing ones through the roof because they made, they they put up various entry points.
Are you, are you saying that if you regulate it? Then, um. Housing or property values will go down?
Well, no, I'm not saying they'll go down. If you own. A house on a lake where you are not allowed to rent it out, it won't sell for as much as if you are allowed to.
Chip, do you think the. Do you think that in this town? That. The current practice of. Of short term rentals on lake on on lakefront has any impact on affordable housing access?
Does it have any, so your question, does it have any impact on? Negative, negative impact on town, town services, transfer station?
Minimal.
Minimal.
And again, compared to, you know. The town having, you know, these massive amounts of people coming in during the summer and how much the local stores. The local businesses, you know, all the weather, everybody else, what they get out of it and.
Yeah, well, something like the the transfer station, I mean, it's a, it's a dwelling unit.
Yeah.
And if somebody's living there full time, they're gonna use a transfer station. If somebody's there for a short term rental, they're gonna use a transfer station. So I don't really see a difference.
And we encourage that. We, you know, we give out passes during the summer. We open them up on Sundays so everybody can dump their garbage.
Yeah, lots of, lots of summer residents.
And there's also. Look like family camps. Some of them, the only way they keep them is by renting them for a while.
My concern was, well, not concern, my thought was. A while ago, which related to. The accessory dwelling problem, right? And then you people would put up. Two, three, or whatever, they would turn them into Airbnb's essentially.
But we addressed that.
But that's been addressed, so really I don't think there's.
What was happening to the jellystone?
What's that?
What was happening to the jellystone windows?
That's a whole, like, a batch of hornets you don't even want to talk about.
That's a, that's a different thing, right? That's.
Yeah, no, that's a different thing. That's a, you know, commercial campsite. That got bought out by, you know, multi million dollar place that wants to go and improve it. And then everybody on the lakes are complaining, well, you can't do that. It's gonna affect our lake and. And when your code officer that also works over there stood up in a meeting and said. Well, they got pre existing rights, just like you do on your acreage of an acre, you know, on the edge. Well, it's not about us. It's about them. Eagles.
John, to your, your question earlier, the D E C D report on housing production rates. Statewide, they were, they were looking at two things. They were looking at like a historic, um. The number that historically the state has not cut out with. And and would need to produce. And then the future mean. Like into the future for the next, you know, five or six years. So statewide, they're saying that by twenty thirty. The state needs seventy six thousand to eighty four thousand new units. In Kennebec County, the historic underproduction is forty six hundred dwelling units. And the future need is forty five to fifty one for a total of ninety seven hundred new units in Kennebec County.
I just, I don't understand these numbers. I mean, Maine has the oldest population anywhere in the state. It's got, it's got a flatly declining population. So there's no population growth there. It has to be people just doing it in second homes. Because there's like. Like we meet, like, for every seventeen people leaving the trades today, one person replaces. That's why you can't find a construction.
I'm I'm sure that, I I didn't read the whole report.
Yeah.
But I'm sure that their methodology, methodology is right now.
I just, I just, oh, I, I, there, there's a shortage of affordable homes in Maine. There's not a shortage of homes, I think. This was just by the overall numbers of people living there and people moving.
But anyway, that's, that's what the numbers are. Not that they're necessarily directly relevant to what we're talking about right now, but you know, that's the question.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think so. So, I mean, did you have anything else you want to add to that?
They did.
Yeah, and that was part of it. I mean, and if you look at this report, they talk about how things changed pretty radically during pandemic in terms of. You know, housing dwelling units and how many and and pandemic changed a lot of things. Um, okay, so the consensus seems to be that we're not going to move forward with anything on that. So. Everyone in very much on that?
Things can change, but yeah.
Yeah, that's a simple fix.
Use nine mile for enough joy.
What?
There's a difference. You have, we have the Cobbsy Water District which overlooks all our lakes here in regional except for Lovejoy.
Yeah.
Depending on nine mile. Whatever it's called, Conservation District. So maybe just words are there.
And I, I, I think, um, Jack, you raised the issue of maybe we want to put in something about requiring that kind of a. A review, but not, it was in a subdivision piece and if. Yeah, and if we wanted, it should be in a more general, more general.
Yeah, I mean, they, they're set up to do that and thirty miles is not. So, so they're good financials, but. Yes, policy is, I mean, I, and I do think we should take out the approval requirements.
Yeah.
When we, we get their review of application, sort those in within their jurisdiction.
As a matter of practice, we can require approval per se, or we have our ask over your permission. Yeah, it's in, um, it's in article six, three K, three A. Um, the next one, clarify the definition floor area, um. This came up as we were talking about these last two. Shore renovations and we had conversations about. The amount of floor area because the requirements change depending on. How much floor area is being taken away and how much is being proposed and if it's remaining the same. And I think we have found some. There's a lot of variety, I think, in the definition and, um. If I remember correctly, there was an issue about. The. The width of the steps, maybe four feet and all that was not completely clear. In that definition, floor area versus to. It's the one, two, three, four. Five, six, seven bullet down. I don't think we have it. So what, I mean, it's like, oh, this is, I had sent out a second email and said, this is revised this. And I added three bullets.
Oh, shoot.
And so, which one did you print?
Obviously the wrong one.
Right, so this bullet says clarify the definition of floor area in the L U O. Next bullet, clarify, consider the matter of floor area versus footprint. As those terms relate to L U O standards and in view of any recent changes. Made to the state minimum guidelines for shoreline zoning. And the last one, consider clarify whether the floor area of an accessory structure should be added to the floor area. Of a nonconforming structure. When determining if that structure, when reconstructed, will be placed with larger than the original structure. And I know that makes no sense just reading it. But that's the issue that you raised, John. And this is about the. Not fisk, but weaver. And Weaver had a shed out behind and the question came up. Should the floor area of the shed be included while we're doing the calculations on the structure? I think the answer is no, but it's a questionable status.
And just if I may, the the D E P, Colin Clark, is very adamant about. L U O's using footprint rather than floor area. He was willing to come in at a meeting and present that.
Uh, I, I had, I, I don't know what you have, but I asked you to send me if you could, the, um, we said that there was some change. That precipitated that. And I'd like to see where that's written because I still don't understand. It doesn't make any sense to me.
We switched the floor number years ago.
I. It's starting a long time ago.
If you have a house and there's a second floor. That floor area, the left of the floor is footprint, because it's not touching the ground, so it's not fully the footprint.
No, because we don't yet. I mean, usually our trigger is floor area. But what, what Chip was, was saying was that. He thinks there's some kind of a change in shoreline zoning minimum guidelines. That say use footprint, not floor area, but I'd like to see what that is.
And his logic is also if you use, because they promote footprint rather than floor area, then it comes up a. Problem with it, that sometimes you might have to go back and consider the footprint rather than floor area. So I'll find that out for you, but like I said, he's willing to come in and talk if we want to give him some time.
Yeah, well, um.
We're, we're using square footage, right? Floor, floor area.
Square footage.
Correct.
And the D E P wants us to use footprint. So, so do they automatically overrule us?
No, we need to see what it looks like. I don't know what this, what this language looks like.
It seems a little odd. I mean, so that would encourage people to build upward as long as.
That's right.
Violent some hype requirement.
Well, you have hyperbaric.
You can build a two stories instead of a one story.
But, I mean, it seems to me, it seems pretty sudden and footprint has been the way we've addressed this. For, you know, it's, it's throughout the ordinance. We've used that for a long time. If, or area, if there is a change, I think we should consider what that change is and where it derives from. Before we can figure out what to do with anything.
There's nothing more restrictive than. I don't know if Florida is more restrictive than a footprint.
But it wouldn't really.
I think. And there's a general principle with shoreline zoning that towns can be more restrictive.
I think, I think that is, I mean, I agree, well, despite, despite the no new collection, Jake, we should find out. But I think. Just based on the last year and a half or two years of applicants, there seems to be some need for improvement in the. In the, um. Nonconforming language section related to. You know, setbacks and, and we've tried really hard, but it still seems really a little bit confusing with the applicant.
Well, we just.
We did, but things like you're saying related to like the stairs or the decks or. The accessory building. So I mean, I agree that all this needs much more clarity.
Yeah, I, I, we're, we're talking about living right now.
You get like three bullets, so.
The way it's written is really complicated. Unless you read it every day. You know, but like just, he gets that. But I mean, I think it could be more clearer.
Maybe there needs to be an argument or something, you know, also puts, remember that map that. D E P gave us about setback. It's an attachment, right? But I mean, those kinds of things where there's a little more.
Well, you know, if you've got some ideas for. Those kinds of attachments or clarification, you know, we could certainly consider them. And John, I don't know if you wanted to or if you have thought about that issue about accessory structures, some more. You don't need to put anything forward right now, but if you want to consider it and make a recommendation, want to come back to talk about this stuff, we could. We could do with that.
In fact, you know, looking at, at it, if you look at the definition of. Floor area talks in terms of, although it's not crystal clear, but it talks in terms of. Uh, habitable area.
Yes.
And so I think that that means, I think the best reading of that definition is that you couldn't. Take the shed area and.
Yeah.
Put it into the house, but. Um, but yeah, it could be more clear.
And I, I, I think, you know, the other thing that I was thinking about is the fact that the language talks about. A structure. So what we're talking about is the floor area of the nonconforming structure. Well, that's what we're talking about. The shed.
Well, in that case, that was beyond me, but.
Yeah, but nevertheless, I mean, what John's saying is it's not habitable. Because it's a shed.
The deck is floor area, right?
Right.
How about that?
That ain't change.
We had one applicant. Years, a couple years ago, I was in Fort Worth at the time, kept insisting, returning to the footprint analysis, even though we kept. Quite a good definition of floor area. Then it turned, but it started with a basement, but the basement's a full basement with more than six feet of clearance. But he didn't want to count the bases. Yeah, this. We have to see what D E P is saying against. Because I think right now the definition anyway in our L U O is clear. People may not, everything shouldn't change for other reasons.
Did, did you want to look at that, John? I, I was thinking that you were looking at that definition at one point, thinking. The floor area definitions. In the stairways, so.
We have, I think, including the shed?
No, I, I mean, that, that's one of the questions that came up. John brought that up.
And I understand having a little bad, but if. If you got a wall like the one where they have a shed, it's a steep wall. They got this little building, it's kind of ratty, it's not run off and whatnot. Nothing's rolling under it, it's there, there. You rip down this little ratty shed and add four feet to your camp. It can close the ground, you rip down this little ratty shed and add four feet to your camp that's on the same roof. To me, it's less runoff than where the shed was, now you could have vegetation. So it seems like it's better for the land if you allow them to rip the shed down and add two feet to their camp. I get that it's not habitable, but I think in the big picture, it's better for the lake and the land if you eliminate a structure.
Right, I, I know, you know, it's, it's, it's an old Kia with two massive garages all within a hundred feet of the lake, I mean, wouldn't it be more beneficial to see them collapse all three of those structures into a single unit?
And then you're not, you're probably not going to have the same amount of roof as you would for the three, with the total. It seems like you can get less runoff and less water pollution if we can allow the, the lawyers to shed and add that.
Yeah, yeah.
Just.
Or even if I don't have a shed, how about a garage, like, like a massive garage or something?
And if it's nice massive garage, they're probably not going to want it, because everybody likes a garage, but.
But then you also need to start thinking about things like, I mean, if it was a massive, big old garage that was always used as a garage and not as a residence.
Yeah.
I mean, I, you need to think about what that does in terms of paving the way for a much bigger residence where a lot more people would be inhabiting the residence and those environmental impacts from a bigger septic system.
That's right, right.
More use of a lake and more hurricane, all of that, you know.
There's no way you incorporate a gray area that you can move.
Yeah, I, I, I understand what you're saying.
Like in those cases, it'd be beneficial to work with them. Not go like a built a 6,000 square foot house.
But right now, you have any option, you just can't do it, it's just a no, you can't include shit.
It would seem like.
And, and so the, the one that you're thinking of specifically is Weaver.
Yes.
And where they have the little shed out back.
Well, the side hill.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, water can go under that shed, if you go under that shed, nothing but bad air can go through. You don't want open?
There's two examples I like to point out that always led me to confusion with this whole subject. If you go to page 11 on performance. And top of the pages three and four. If you read these, 75 horizontal from the normal line shall not cause the maximum combined total floor area for all portion of those structures. So this, to me, was always telling me those structures in that land, okay? I think if you change that to three and four, that would take confusion out of it. You change, just move the words around.
And I, and I don't think those were written, I, I think it was describing the, the class of structure, that's why it says structures.
We could clarify that, because to me, that was the total structures in that building, including sheds, you know, things like that.
Like sometimes it's sheds too, or bunkhouse, I mean, call a shed, it's really bunkhouse.
Could we allow it?
Shouldn't be.
Where?
It could be, you know, like.
Allow them to demolish the machine, I think if it was within a, under certain size. But if it's not a big garage, then demolish it down or, you know, whatnot. Or if there's no gray area there.
Well, I, you know, I, I think there could be, I, I don't know that we're going to work out the details tonight, but I think it is something that we could, we could look after it.
I'm looking right now at the state.
Yeah.
Requirement, it says the maximum total footprint for the principal structure may not be expanded to a size greater than 800 feet or 30% larger than the footprint that existed under the universe in that term is greater, maximum. So you're referencing principal structure.
Yeah.
That's the 30% rule, that most people think is applied, but even reef, reef is more strict than that, my understanding.
We use square footage instead of percent.
Yes.
Instead of footprint, is that?
You said footprint, not square footage, so you mean upper floor.
Yeah, well, I'll go find the footprint definition to see what they say about that.
And I thought the statement's 30% volume, not just footprint.
Yeah, there's volume restriction as well.
Well, I think what we need is for somebody or somebody to take a closer look at these issues and bring it back again, possibly with some recommendations. Because I don't think we're going to resolve it tonight.
Oh, just a quick question, Paul, if, if that had been shed, but had been a bunkhouse, would we have allowed it?
Well, you know, one of the things that I come back to in my mind is that the language in the ordinance talks about the structure, the non-conforming structure. And I think we've always read that to mean, you know, that, that principal structure. So in the Weaver case, it would be the cottage.
But then it's, isn't there something about living area as well, too? So like you have an extended living area, it's just not attached, I think, it's extended. I don't know, it's, it's, it's a pretty fusion, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
It could be, it could be invaded.
Yeah, it would.
And I think with accessory dwelling structure too, that changes it out.
Yeah.
Right? So it's an accessory structure in that same area, that could be different.
Well, an accessory dwelling, I think, is defined as, as kind of a standalone unit that's got bookings, bathroom, sleeping facilities in it, so it would be a bunkhouse.
They could slap a stove in there.
Well, yeah, yeah. So. John, did you want to look further at, at that? And you can bring that back and talk about it some more. Both with the, you know, the, the issue that Brandon's raising.
Footprint versus floor area.
You know, this, this, well, the, the other issue, it's kind of separate from, there's a footprint versus floor area issue, and then there is the matter of including accessory structures in the square footage, like the Weaver case, that's what, that's what Brandon's thought of.
That's how I read it, yeah, they think it's just the principal structure.
I just wonder if we can make a gray area. Was it a case like, but we have, yeah.
Well, do you guys want to talk about this? Well, that has. Okay, so Jack, you're going to look at the definition of floor area and then floor area footprint and the accessory structure issue. John, you can take the first graphic first? You might want to talk with Brandon too about his, his thoughts about some flexibility and the length of gray area. You know, and I'm still referring, what are you talking about is in cases where, you know, it's clear that there would be a benefit, it would be better for, for the lake in general.
Specifically about that one.
About that one, so that, that's the example. Yeah.
Sometimes it's. You kind of push comments elsewhere.
Okay, so that takes us to the second bullet. Now, the first one is, is the town's sludge or notes. And I think, I think this one is pretty simple, you know. For better or worse, I, I know a fair bit about this. And, and I can probably make the revisions to the sludge ordinance pretty easily because basically the state of Maine has prohibited the land application of treatment plant sludge. And I think that just needs to be eliminated from our ordinance. I don't remember how our present ordinance is, is written. I, I don't know, I don't, I don't think we need to.
I don't think I have any.
It's a second word.
It's a, so I know, so I have my, like, my solar button here.
So I think the town sludge ordinance addresses what I thought had included industrial sludges, treatment plant sludge, but maybe you're right, maybe you didn't know how in the first place. And also seppage. And there are some changes with regard to seppage too, because of heat exhaustion. And so, you know, I can, I can take a look at that. Bring up, bring a recommendation back, I can do that pretty easily. And then we have the communication tower ordinance, the solar ordinance, and the blood flow management ordinance. We talked about solar already. And, and we have graciously, we've talked about one.
What did you want to say?
Yeah, there was three items I had for you to consider. Number one, you'll, you'll understand these. A better definition of screening, we had our friends up there, we looked at screening. Was supposed to be five-foot trees, they were like one-foot trees with one sprout at the top, so somehow we couldn't accomplish, you know, a fuller tree or a higher tree or whatever. But they didn't screen very well, we're going to go back and have to put more things in. So if we can improve the screening definition within there. And then, this would be kind of a request. There's one category, which is small installation, which would basically be a roof but on the ground. And that has to be approved by the planning board. I'd suggest that maybe you put that on the code officer, because I've had two or three applications, and because they had to go to the planning board, they went away and they didn't do it. So it's, it's rather a simple, you know, installation, you know, involving simple things. So I just suggest changing that from planning board to.
And it doesn't have to be setbacks.
Setbacks, fencing, whatever.
Right.
Oh, I see.
It's only used card.
I think we do my notes, yes, okay, what was the third? Me, or Sturken? There, there's a need to update some of the decommissioning language, because state law, they put in place, I'll tweak that. And then, I think that's the only thing, so.
I should talk about that, because there was the erosion problem, but that was quite, you know, a battle.
Jack, didn't you ask me in an email, it was a year ago, about the decommissioning statute and how it's dealt with? Whether our ordinance could be changed or something? Didn't I answer you? I know the state has decommissioned, we have a decommission, we can still keep decommissioning. Yes, we can, we can develop a sale or do our own. Yeah, I think they're pretty comparable, there's, there's not a lot, I mean, they're in the same sphere.
And they go, it goes with the land, not with the owners, so it stays with the land.
Yes, yeah. More importantly, we require a surety bond or a security bond in the town, which is, which is important, because you're the ones that. But this last one we did, we go to the state. We didn't require any, I guess, most usually just. They told us how much the state was requiring them to, to post with the state.
I thought we had required one, we talked a lot about state requiring, I mean, that is they were focusing on the state, but I thought we had also.
Yeah, it's pretty clear, and some good points there, it's sort of ones that has to be able to take some of the money.
I think there was a question, who was on first that came up there? Perhaps one, or I.
I can't remember.
By the way, I saw that property sold recently. Which I thought was odd.
Where the, you want to go to nowhere?
They were going to buy it once they, eventually sold them.
Yeah, thank you. You're just in sale.
Okay, so it closed, it must have closed, it's now the actual, now they do, shaved a few things. The wall was beautiful, the wall, this is crazy.
Has that been done?
Right, well, if any of you, if any of you have any other comments I'm working on, if something comes to mind, just send me an email.
Chip, with floodplain management ordinance, I mean, that's something that typically you, you administer directly, rather than the planning board. Could you, is there anything about it, I know that certain aspects of it were updated, the maps were updated recently.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's any of the language that you as, as the outdated or problematic. If there is, maybe you could identify that for us. And then, you know, the other one, of the communication tower ordinance. And that's just a, it's on this list because nobody's really looked at it for a while, and it's, it would be a read-through, a review to determine if, you know, there's anything obvious that needs to be updated or changed for any reason. So it's a review necessarily, kind of a revision.
I did have a couple of thoughts on that.
Oh, you did?
I can go back to that.
About, you want to do that?
I don't have any.
I don't know what I have to do there.
And I was annoyed to.
Oh, crap.
Yeah, you know, and that's a, you know, that's a bigger, that's a bigger issue. You looked at the noise standards.
I don't get these ordinance, and I look at the D E P's site, let's call the site.
Site location.
So. We never acted by it in all those years.
Yeah.
So, but I can look at them. I think ours is. Our, our ordinance is sort of, you know, it's pretty simple. Trying to see if there's something missing.
What do we have beyond dogs parking?
What?
What do we have beyond dogs parking?
It's all for commercial industrial, very natural stuff. Regarding this office.
You can't have more than that, you're not there every week, and you'll.
So, so we're, that's a noise problem. A measured motion.
Okay, so Jack will take a look at this. Okay, so I think that takes us through the first two categories, and the only thing left really is the, is a comprehensive plan. And I, you know, I'd be interested in your thoughts of the, the con plan issues, but I, I saw.
There's a couple, there were a couple that jumped out at you.
There was.
It seemed pretty broad to me, but.
They, they are particularly big and broad, and I think they take some thought and some, you know, some work to figure out what is to be done about them. There was one in particular that I thought maybe was doable, that I could put out on the table for you to consider. Not the parking lot. The what?
Not the parking.
Not the parking lot, I hear.
That's not our job. If somebody wants to come for us and they're like, hey, I want to do the parking lot.
And that was not assigned just to the, the only reason that I highlighted it was that planning board was there, and it was a short-term thing, but I don't think it's going to be a responsibility designated for.
A lot of the housing things, I think, are slowly being addressed.
Yeah, they are.
Some.
One of them, we've actually finished, and that was the ordinance updates, including the, you know, the new report for housing stuff. So there were a couple of things in that housing section that I was going to mention just here informationally, because they reference short-term rentals. This is the only discussion of short-term rentals that I could find in the town, town regulations plan. Plan. On page. One. Ninety-five.
Come on, you go for it.
Of the con plan. And this is the housing section. Policies six point one and six point four. Both reference some kind of tracking system for. Six point one does nothing, the planning board is not listed there, but it talks about the CEO and the assessor tracking seasonal homes. Uh, year round seasonal rentals, et cetera. And so I'm just mentioning that because it's connected to our conversation. And then six point four is. Also the CEO midterm. Explore tracking methods for short term rental, short term vacation rentals to evaluate possible impacts. On the environment in town related to short term rentals. So I just wanna point out that those are in con plan. Uh, as board, we've determined, we're not gonna move forward with anything having to do with short term rentals, but those two pieces are in there, just to be.
They're willing to count the. Comp me for doing it, I might consider it.
So. Uh, seven point two, also on one ninety-five, is designate a location in the growth area where mobile home parks are allowed. And where manufactured housing is allowed. And. And, but this was done before the law.
Right.
So, you know, this one becomes.
Boot.
Now either either moved or or different or kind of achieved on a state run. So that's that's.
Yeah, the ball community in town had such foresight.
Uh, there's some merchant rides. There are some big broad ones here, you know, like limit non residential development in critical rural areas to natural resource based businesses and so forth. And so that necessitates, you know, figuring out what a critical rural area is, and that relates to some other provisions in the con plan. So it's big, and it's it's more complicated than just, it's not just a task. It's a.
Wasn't there an effort a number of years ago to. Look for world zone and some designated areas that would be kept.
Yeah.
Rural.
Yeah, and and that is. It's it's, well, yeah, something like that. And and that concept shows up again here. But it's not in the short term category, so I put it on this list, but that isn't. So a lot of these are big and broad, and I don't think that we're gonna have the time to do. Much with most of these during this, this cycle. The one that I thought perhaps maybe we could do is. There's a lot of water quality stuff in here, but I think those are for another day too. A lot of them are.
Yeah, I, because I look at it, there's a, there's a bunch of, I know the states going through updating groundwater.
Yeah.
Right now, so I'm. Hold on until that process.
Yeah. And there, you know, there are some others, you know, camp roads, roads within lake water sheds and. Uh, destination practice and new standards. There are a couple related to that.
Did the, the concept, I remember from quite a few meetings, there was a discussion about. His strong.
Uh, it may have, I didn't look at it recently, because I was just focused on planning board and.
I looked at. Wasn't that. When you think of the housing.
Yes, that is the one I was thinking of. So on page two forty-one. Um, one point four says, consider rewording and redefining the academic district in the land use ordinance to allow residential housing. Not related to academic uses. Residential housing not used for the academic sector already exists in this district. And could be expanded to create affordable housing and workforce housing close to the village areas and major highways. And that would look for a term one. And and that's something that the con plan committee actually talked about a fair bit, that, you know, that. The ability to use those, like Kentshill has stand well houses. If they weren't being used by Kentshill School. Uh, they could theoretically be used by, you know. By other parties for housing, not connected to Kentshill School under this.
Is that what they were alluding to, or were they alluding to what Kent Hill had asked? This May in the past about, they, when they have, they were thinking about. Renting out student rooms, you know, the dormitories for summertime. For events and for vacation times. As, you know, a way to raise funds, because they've been pretty nailed by COVID and everything. I wasn't aware that it was about the houses, because those are used. And when they're not being used, or they can't afford them, they sell them. It's been a couple of reasons.
Yeah, they may be, um, residential. Housing, I I suppose.
It would be branch one issue with up there with the, they wanted to sell lots of.
There's a piece, there's a piece that was included in the academic district that shouldn't have been.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's privately owned.
Yeah, we fixed that.
Yeah, didn't we remove the refining building house being related to the. In the school?
No, I don't, I don't think we did it that way. I think we rezoned, we took that parcel out of the academic. I I don't think so, because that's what this is calling for.
It's two. There's one of them by Beans Mills, and there was another one right above five Kentshill.
So I don't know if that's biting too much off to deal with that right now too, or not. If there's somebody who's interested in pursuing that, you know, we could, we could see if we could come up with something, before the deadlines, or we can just. You know, keep this piece, keep all of the con plan pieces together and do.
As the issue.
A chunk, well, not as the issue comes up, because I think we have an obligation to, you know, there's a, there's a schedule, a general schedule for. Enacting the con plan pieces. So I think we need to go ahead and do that, but. Um, it doesn't have to be in this cycle necessarily. It, this was in the short term category, that's the reason I included that. I only included the short term things on that list that I did.
You necessarily have to do it, which is because of that point I do.
Um, that's.
That was sold us when we sold that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm. I mean, in addition to the side proportion you just cited, there's also back on page two oh one, strategy fourteen point three. We're supposed, well, that says the slight word, the town manager will deal with that one. Consider how the town and the school can promote affordable housing. To benefit both parties.
That's a good.
That's pretty, I mean.
Yeah.
Well.
The market is the market.
Right, I mean, as long as we're in the econ, the nature of the economy, the market economy we have. We don't have the power to supply, we'll do anything necessarily to lead to that.
Yeah, and 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 the planning board isn't listed here, right?
On that one, there's nothing.
I would say to bring this point out, there's one that is assigned to us that we choose not to.
We should look at it.
We should, we should document that we. Start discussing.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And so, you know, maybe the better course of action with the con plan issues would be to, to keep them for a. Conversation about con plan. Issue that was identified. And we could, it could go through, for instance, we could go through all of those short term. Requirements and make a decision about generally how we wanna proceed with those, and just keep them all together, including that.
I mean, is there options saying we're not doing that? And some of these, some of these are just not achievable.
Um, well, they may not be achievable, you know, yeah.
They're not.
Yeah.
You have to remember how that dark.
Man, you get a bunch of consultants.
It's a, it's a bunch of, it's a bunch of different people in different agendas all come together.
There was a lot of people in a room for a long time talking about something else, I was there. And some of it is really good.
Sure bit.
Also, the last piece, I guess.
Last piece.
It's one of the last pieces that's good, gets done, goals and objectives, right? For us, though, of the con plan, of the con plan process. The assignment of the different things to the different boards is.
Oh, yeah.
It's at the end of the process, which lasts like eighteen months.
Yes, yeah.
So by that point, my point is, it was exhausted, the process.
And and there's nothing that that says that. The con plan can't change. I mean, you know, if if there's something wrong with it, if there's a problem with the particular piece of that, or. You know, planning board identifies a piece that we think is just not achievable, you know, I think that we could. We could explain that, you know, bring it forward and. Suggest the line that could change.
Well, so everything on the general recommendations page, you know, you're all showing the recommendations from the con plan. And their planning board is being asked to respond, maybe not necessarily for the cycle, but over time.
Yeah, and short term is generally defined as as two years.
So if we just went through and. Proposed a response to each one of these things, you know, they were gonna do this, we were gonna do that, we're gonna confirm this. Would that be an adequate response to the select point that we need to fire it for this cycle?
Um, but we don't necessarily have to do. Well, like, are you talking about this cycle being?
Yeah, I mean, I I I could go through and respond and every, I could come, I I could draft a response and present it to the board. And say, here's the recommendation based on my comments out there, just don't need to do the research or something like that, so at least. Document it, have something to talk about and debate if you want to, and we want to do that. So you can at least say that we've addressed it, we've looked at it in this cycle.
Okay, that 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 could be helpful to us. I think our. Ultimately, what we have to complete this cycle is, I mean, any of the revisions that we agree is a group we want to take forward on the land use ordinance.
Which was everything above the line, we've never been talking to up until this point, right, like one of those things, these are, these are kind of.
And and, you know, and the the con plan stuff initially, I was thinking, well, maybe there are some, some ordinance revisions that would come from that con plan stuff that we could take forward this time, but looking at it more closely. I don't think that's the case. There really isn't anything there that's, you know, quite amazing, I think, for us to do. But if you wanna go through and take an initial look at those, those short term things, and then we can.
Yeah, I can at least summarize it, and, you know, and just send it out to everybody.
Yeah, that would be great, that would be great.
And it's just everything in six, you know, everything that you marked here on your housing policy strategy, six nine two seven eight three eight dot one, all that stuff.
Yeah, those are the things that were assigned, those were short term items that were assigned, at least in part, sort of.
Okay, so if I have any questions on this.
Okay, great.
I think that's good too, because if it wasn't a base, we black, that's not this point, but I'm just saying the general sense of the community is with the. It's a little bit disappointing, following through.
Well, the slat board actually is, they are. With regularity, putting that on their agenda, checking in on, you know, implementing the the con plan and. So that that is happening. Yeah, I've talked to Eric. A couple of times about our pieces of, he knows, for instance, that we, you know, if these were on the list, we were gonna have a little shit conversation to my thought of them. So they're they're tracking, I think they're they're serious about keeping track. Okay, so anything we missed, anything else from anybody? Anything we should add to this list?
Any question?
Yeah.
Any question about? There's, there was a lot of talk about fiber optic things in town and. That this, does that impact, I don't know if it's really necessary, kind of, totally. Has anybody asked, like, issue?
This video going from town to all the fiber optic, I think it's. High Bosch, anything that was discussed before. And then now the states come out with something that video or any of these don't fit you, the state's giving away. Sat satellite packages to people that can't afford it, so. They've basically taken the impetus from the town and.
So you're you're talking.
I was thinking from a land use perspective.
From a land use perspective. I mean, they're.
I imagine it's just like a regular ride away. You know, like, for example. I didn't know if there was any. Special circumstances that would come up.
Unless they go to a video clubhouse somewhere.
So the last, the last thing I just wanted to mention really quickly as we wrap up is the the schedule for this. I mentioned that in general terms, I think we need to. Early March, in mine, is the target to have, you know, drafts all pulled together and and so forth, and we will need to. Anything we're proposing for revisions, we will need to hold a hearing on, and there are notice requirements and so forth, so we'll need a couple of weeks for that. So, uh, my thought was that maybe we can check in and see how everybody's doing. We had our first. I think we agreed earlier, they'd be one in New November and one in December because of the holidays. And we usually run into difficulty scheduling because of that. So if we just plan now. That first, the second Tuesday in November. Which is already scheduled, right, and we got here and scheduled for that year, and then there would be the second Tuesday in December, whatever that date is.
Which marijuana bills come back again, so it'll probably be saved then, then.
And we should talk about marijuana stuff before then, because there are some issues, I think, with that. So if we could plan to like check in at that December meeting and see where everybody is with the pieces, and then. What we might need to do is schedule another meeting similar to this one, they're just dedicated to talking through the drafts. And look at perhaps early January and keep up, it's what I had in mind.
November twelve and December tenth.
And December. And the twelfth, the agenda is already out on the website. Right? Uh, I don't know the date, it's the second Tuesday.
Fourteen.
Okay, we're done.
Everybody, please be careful on the stairs going down, it's dark.
Oh, great, thank you.